Yeah, I left it with my wife, she's got to deal with it today.
Good morning. We will call- Good morning, Ms. Morgan.
Good morning.
We will call to order the briefing meeting of-
Fifteenth.
Monday, July fifteenth, thank you very much for that. And the first and only order of business is a budget update. Dr. Desmore is a Ms. Letcher, would you like to just jump in? Get started right away?
Absolutely, good morning.
Morning.
Very good, and we have just Ms. Morgan on the phone?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So, we wanted to get together with the board one last time before the tentative budget approval on July thirtieth, to talk about some high-level things in some detail related to the preliminary budget for the new fiscal year twenty. To this date, we have previously talked about FTE estimates, how they're projected, and their importance in the budget, on the budget, and in the budget process. We've talked about previously the process used for both schools and departments in terms of formulating the budget for FY twenty. We've talked about each of the funds of the budget, how they're used, and where those funds come from. And we've talked about major assumptions that we've used in creating the budget for FY twenty, and then gone into some detail about some major components of those funds, such as the capital and sales tax plan. So, now we're here to cover the preliminary budget, how the preliminary budget will become the tentative budget to be approved, and then the process that typically happens between the tentative and the final budget. So, we welcome any questions that may come along with that. At this point, the FY twenty preliminary budget, as you've seen here, is one billion, five hundred and seventy-six million, four hundred and sixty-nine thousand, five hundred and sixty dollars. Now, this amount is less than a one percent increase so far over the amended budget from FY nineteen. There will be some changes that take place between net, what you're seeing here now as the preliminary budget, and what you will be approving as the tentative budget in a couple of weeks. But in a little bit, we'll explain where those changes come from. In all, the, we wanted to show a breakdown of where the funds are budgeted. The graph that you see on the left, and I want to point out the differences between them, is the all-funds graph. So, that is every fund in the budget, all six, and where those are budgeted. And then the graph on the right is the operational fund, the general fund only, and how those funds break down. So, you see within the general fund, the percentage to schools is the largest piece of the pie, as it should be at sixty-six percent. When you get to the all-funds graph, that portion for schools tends to be lower, and that portion is at forty-one percent in all funds. The reason why that is, is in the all-funds, we pull in different funds related to insurance and benefits, and mostly related to capital. And the items inside of our capital budget aren't necessarily budgeted at the school level. So, they're large amounts of money, but they're not necessarily budgeted at the school level. So, you see that percentage to schools going down when you look at all funds, and you see that percentage rise when you're just looking at the general fund as it typically would. You'll also see a larger slice in there for what we call countywide appropriations. And basically, countywide or any of those things that aren't related to any specific location, such as funds for insurance, utilities, technology, and the reserves inside of the budget. So, that's the breakdown of those.
One of the things I just want to point out that sometimes gets confused is people want to take that one number and divide it by our current, current number of students and call that per pupil spending. But a number of those, if you think about our capital budget, those are dollars that are expended for capital projects that can be used by students over the course of many, many years. So, to peg that to one group of students and call that per pupil spending for that group of students would be an erroneous assumption. We've seen that happen before, and I just wanted to point that out that, you know, it's, when you're talking about per pupil spending, you need to make sure that you're looking at apples-to-apples comparisons.
Well, that's a good point, and a couple of other things to break out too, or to kind of dissect when you're looking at all funds. Remember, there's a couple of funds in the budget that are transfers of revenue from one fund to another. So, if you were just to take the total budget and divide it by the FTE, you're actually double-counting revenue, right? Everything within the debt service fund is just a transfer from our capital funds. So, it's not double the revenue, it's just the movement of that revenue from one fund to another. So, you really can't count that fund when you're looking at trying to figure out what a cost per student would be. Same thing for the internal service funds. That comes directly from revenue, that comes mostly from the general fund. So, again, you cannot just take the total budget and divide that by FTE and say that would be a total amount per student, because the math doesn't add up or doesn't come out right, because you have to figure out where those transfers are coming from, and really what the revenue sources are within each of the different funds. One more thing to point out within this graph as well, within the countywide funds, contingency will also come within that piece of the pie. Right now, we have contingency set about just at three percent, which is where it is by law, where we try to keep it, in terms of what will be in contingency, but also with the law. The law takes into account the whole entire fund balance and what percentages the fund balances of the new revenues. Difference between contingency, meaning those funds that we specifically set aside for emergencies, and an entire fund balance of the budget, which would basically be any unexpended amounts of money that move forward from one year to the next. And so, that's the difference between those two terms. So, the countywide includes just the contingency. When you get into approving the tentative budget, the tentative budget will reflect what we show as fund balance, which includes all of those funds that are carrying forward from one year to the next that have been unexpended but may still be tied up at a particular location for their use in the next fiscal year. So, as we look at the, the general fund expenditures by object, again, we want to point out, just as in the general fund, most of the expenses, sixty-six percent, are budgeted at schools at this point. When you look at it by major expenditure or major object, seventy percent of our general fund is budgeted within salaries and benefits, as we would expect it to be, because we are a very labor-intensive organization.
So, we also wanted to show you that as we were building the budget, that we did look at our strategic plan and tried to align to our strategic plan and the district priorities. And so, we wanted to list some of those big-ticket items that showed the alignment to our strategic plan as we went through. This is not by any means all of them, but it's, you know, a good number of them that we just wanted to point out, of things that we were doing to align the budget with the strategic plan.
And one of the things, if I can point out, with the, the budget process as it relates to, specifically to departments, superintendent really stressed a strategic plan focus in terms of what departments and schools were focusing on, what they were asking for, and how we were going to allocate resources. So, as we move into future budget planning processes, we will continue to refine the way that we utilize the strategic plan in order to really focus allocations and focus the process in on how is any individual allocation really affecting what the goals are of the strategic plan and prioritizing the requests in terms of the strategic plan.
So, the next thing we wanted to go through is legislation that's affecting the budget. So, I'm sure that you all have heard about a lot of these, but I just wanted to run through them again. The turnaround school supplement, that one is a new supplement in the FFP calculation. It's to provide wraparound services. You'll be receiving the plan, because it must be approved by you by August first, and then to the state by September. So, academic services and budget, and a bunch of people are working to bring that plan to you. It looks like two of our schools, Eastleigh County High School and Manatee, are the two schools that qualify for this. So, we're working on that plan, and we're bringing it to you at the July thirtieth meeting. The best and brightest, as you all know, I spoke to you about before, was now put into the FFP, and it's now a negotiable item, where it was not before, when it was outside of the FFP. The digital classrooms that, that was used for technology in the budget was reduced greatly this year. And one of the reasons that they reduced that was to put more dollars into the FFP as flexible dollars. However, those expenses that we had for, that we were using those digital dollars for are still in the budget. So, even though it provided some additional flexibility, we're still having to take care of those same things that we were doing before. The districts do not have to share their one point five capital outlay millage because of charter schools getting all of the PICO money. That affects different districts in different ways. Our PICO allocation happens, the PICO maintenance is less than what we would have had to have shared with, of our one point five. So, it actually is better for us in this, but it would be even better if we could keep our one point five and receive PICO dollars, since we have the larger amount of students, but that's not the way the state saw it. There's also another fifty million dollars for a hardening grant. So, we'll be working with staff to see what we can do to get some of those dollars for Lee County. There is also a requirement, they made some changes because they were tired of hearing school districts complain that we don't have to meet, charter schools don't have to meet the same requirements as we do when we build schools. So, they did loosen up some of the requirements for SREF as it pertains to building. However, one of the things that has to happen in order to see that SREF requirement loosening for us is that you have to, every district has to have the right amount of shelters that are required in the district. We do not have enough shelters in Lee County, so we will not be able to take that SREF requirement and loosen up some of ours. If a county goes out for additional operating millage funds from this point forward, we will have to share those dollars with charters as well, that's new legislation that just happened. Recruitment and retention bonuses were added to the best and the brightest, and it's for all instructional staff, not just teachers. They did change it with the general knowledge test now, that the teachers only have to retake the ones that they fail, which I think will help a little bit in that. And then the last thing that I wanted to touch on was the certificates of participation. As you know, we came to you all when we got the sales tax, we were going to go out for the sales tax bond. And the new legislation was put into the statutes that the only way to exceed the cost-per-student stations was to go out for a certificates of participation and use that funding in order to exceed the cost-per-student station. We have been working with construction to see if we can come within the cost-per-student stations, but I'm sure all of you have heard other counties complain as well. It's an unreasonable dollar amount that they have set as a cost-per-student stations. We don't feel that we would ever be able to meet it, as any other district is the same way. They're not able to meet that cost-per-student stations. So, unfortunately, that means that even though we can use the sales tax revenue to repay the certificates of participation, it does look like we're going to have to go out for certificates of participation and use the repayment method as the sales tax in order to be able to exceed the cost-per-student stations. So, we'll be bringing that back to you on July twenty-ninth. We'll have our financial advisor come in, and he's going to speak to you about the differences between the certificates of participation and the sales tax, and what that looks like. And it is very minimal of a difference from what they can gather right now. Of course, it all matters, means when you go out to market is when you can really tell.
So, the cost difference is not that big?
It's not as much as-
So, based on the analysis that they did for this particular COPS issue we have coming up, so of course, marketing conditions will always drive what the differences may or may not be. But based on the analysis that they did of the issue that we would like to do now for MMM and the Lehigh Senior Edition, the difference that they found was a little over a million dollars over the term, over the life of the bond, which would, which is ten years. We're trying to do the life of the bond to match what the sales tax revenue funding source would be. So, over that ten years, it was a little over a million dollars. But the present value of that million dollars, of course, makes it a little bit smaller than that. So, we have that analysis that we can send to you, but we also wanted to invite them here for a briefing at our next meeting on the twenty-ninth, so they could really go through the two different types of funding sources, the process between each, and the diff, why, why, what drives the differences between the two funding sources, or between the two financing sources.
But it's fair for me to go to, like, ISOC and tell them that this is a million-dollar cost to the taxpayers of Lee County?
Yes, based, based on that preliminary analysis, it is an estimated cost of a little over a million dollars between the two different methods of financing, yes. Now, of course, that is subject to what happens when we actually go out to market, but that's their analysis of what they believe it would be.
And are we looking at a potential interest rate decrease coming up soon? Did I hear that?
Yes, we could potentially be. That was one of the things that they had in their analysis, was that they anticipated that there might be some favorable changes to the market when we do go out to price this COPS. But it could very well be that we are.
Are MMM and the expansion at Lehigh, those kind of grandfathered, are they under the old law, because they were started then?
Unfortunately, no. It is, it is not, because the, they were, under the old law, what we had in place, or what we had started at that point in time, didn't constitute what the law deems as a contract in place for either one of those locations. So, because of that, we're not under the old law for either one of those projects.
Okay, thanks.
We also wanted to run through what you can expect moving forward for the tentative budget hearing. So, when we come back to you for the tentative budget hearing, you'll be adopting all the proposed millages for the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty tentative budget, which includes the required local effort. So, the required local effort is one that, while you have the right to vote no, what happens is if we don't pass the, the millage rate requirement for the required local effort, we cannot participate in the FFP, the Florida Education Finance Program, which is where we get all of our funding. The other parts of, part of that is the discretionary millage rate, which is the point seven five eight mils, and the capital outlay millage of one point five mils. You'll adopt the tentative budget, you'll adopt all resolutions relating to the milligram budget, and the final public hearing, then you'll adopt the final public hearing date of September tenth, twenty nineteen. I'm going to go through the documents with you in a moment on what all of those documents are. But I wanted to run through a timeline for you. What's, before the tentative budget, what's going to happen is by next Friday, or by this Friday, the nineteenth, the state must certify to us the new tax rule and the millages that they're putting forth for us to, for you to vote on. The July twenty-fifth, we will have all budget documents to you at that time. July twenty-sixth, we must advertise the tentative budget in the news press. The tentative hearing then will be held on July thirtieth. On August thirtieth, we will have all the final documents to you for the final public hearing that will be held on September tenth. So, that's the timeline moving forward. So, then I would like to go through the documents, the backup documents that were provided to you. This, this budget summary is just a breakdown of all of the funds, how the one point five comes out by fund, and then each of the additional revenue sources and the expenditures, so you can see where they're at. The next page details the balances and reserves. So, if you looked on your budget summary, the bottom line is the balances and reserves, and this gives the breakout of where those are and what they're for by fund. Then we've provided to you the individual funds all the way through, and all of the breakdown of where the expenditures are, what, where the revenue is coming in at, just so you can look at that. That will also be provided to you with the tentative budget with the updated numbers at that time. We've also included the proposed new positions and proposed reclassifications that we're going to be bringing forth to move forward. These will be, some updates will be provided on some of these as we move forward, and some more things are happening throughout. So, what, the forms that you'll be approving, and I kind of want to walk through this process with you. For the tentative budget, the first sheet that you see that comes up is the resolution determining revenues and millages levied. This is a required form from the state, which basically gives the tax role amount, the amount to be levied, and the amount that generates from each of those different levies. So, this is basically just a form that the state requires you to sign off on. It also has on there how much either we exceed or we're below the rollback rate, which will be determined at that time as well. We also have a resolution adopting the tentative millage rates. This is another form, and while they seem redundant, they're all required by the state. They give basically the same information, just in a different format, but they are required. So, basically, this says the same thing, just in a letter format, and not on the form that they provide. You'll also be adopting the resolution for the tentative budget at that time, which is basically, it just says how much the budget that you're adopting is at the tentative. The next sheet, and I believe the final sheet, is the certification of school taxable value. This was one that the Department of Revenue requires, which basically tells you what the, all of the numbers are for, this breakdown is the tax rule, the rollback rate, the required local efforts, how much they generate, and the percentage rate that we're up or down. So, they're basically all the same forms, they're just in a different format for the different groupings. And those are the items that you'll be approving at the tentative budget hearing, hopefully. I wanted to-
If I, I'm sorry, if I could just step back and give just a kind of higher, higher level view of all this. The statutes in chapter two hundred are very particular in how school boards must go through and adopt their tentative budgets. And so, all of the forms and resolutions that you have to do related to those, and the exact timeline upon which they will be done, down to the days, are detailed in statute. These resolutions that you see here as examples in your backup, including and up to the certification of school taxable value, are all required under law in terms of how board members must adopt resolutions and the tentative budget, and then also the final budget as well, when we get to that point. Each of them are also very specific in terms of different things that have to be done, in terms of advertisements in the paper of the budget, and notifications that are sent out to taxpayers in terms of TRIM notices, which I think you're getting ready to get into a little bit of detail, correct?
Yes. So, the difference-
Are we going to have a chance to ask questions overall about some specific things at the end, or do you want me? I can wait, it's just a couple of little questions.
You can go ahead and ask if you'd like.
Oh, okay. I was looking at special, the special revenue under food, food service. So, have we lost summer feeding program, fresh fruits and vegetables, the federal through the state? Is that just gone? There's no, nothing marked there.
You're looking at the individual page.
I'm looking at special revenue food, food service fund.
No. What happens is, that's a collection as we go. So, we don't go ahead and put it in the budget till they start the program, and that's when we'll budget the program, and you'll see it then.
Okay, so, but there's no indication that-
No, there is no indication that we'll be-
You know who in Washington just said, "We don't need to feed them in the summer, they can harvest."
No, there is no indication that we'll be losing these funds for those, on this page, and I just wanted to point out so that everybody could see where you were looking. On the special revenue food service fund, you see these blank lines here for either the summer feeding program or the fresh fruits and vegetables programs. These are specific grants that we get, and those grants, as Kelly said, are budgeted when they are awarded. And so, that is why you don't see them, but no, we have no indication that we will not be receiving them. We expect to continue to receive them and continue with those programs when we see the award.
And by the time we get to the final budget, you'll see some numbers in there at that time.
That's, yes, that's good. That was it for right now.
Okay. The other thing I wanted to talk about was when the differences between the preliminary and the tentative budget, what you can expect to see differently, and then between the tentative and the final. So, between the preliminary that you have right now and the tentative, you're going to see updated fund balances more than likely. And you'll also see, the big piece that you'll see is the second calculation of the Florida Education Finance Program, which we should be coming in this week, which is Friday. And that will be the piece, the biggest piece of the change that you'll see will be the required local effort numbers, and things will be finalized at that point. So, those are the adjustments that you'll see for this one. Between the tentative and the final budgets, what you'll see is the fund balance updates, the carryover from this year, from the current, from FY nineteen into FY twenty. So, that will increase the expenditures in, on the budget as well. So, at that point, like any schools that have funds remaining, you'll, that will increase the amount that they have at the schools, because that money will roll back out to the schools. So, you'll see those differences at that time. For the tentative budget, what happens with the notices and stuff, so we'll- So we'll put an ad in the newspaper, which is required by statute. You'll receive all of the documents and the newspaper ads that we're providing to the newspaper before it's in there. Would the, after you approve it, the TRIM notices go out to the taxpayers at that point in time? And that's how the taxpayers are noticed, are through the TRIM ads, that they get their new updated tax bills? Did I forget?
No, the estimated date that the tentative budget ad will appear in the paper is July 26th. So you can expect to see in the paper an advertisement of the tentative budget on July 26th. And then pretty soon, following the approval of the tentative budget on July 30th, you'll see the property tax notices going out to each of the taxpayers that you're familiar with in terms of showing every taxing authority, what their proposed tax rates are, and then what property taxes would be if they stayed the same versus if we adopted the new tax rates across the board for all of our different taxing authorities that will all be listed on that notice, which is known as the TRIM or the Truth in Millage Notice that will go out to the taxpayers very early in August. So going back to some of the documentation that you saw in this backup for the breakdowns of some of the different budgets within the general fund or any of the other funds, we wanted to make sure, we've done some highlights for you in our previous budget briefing related to each of these different funds and what was in them. So we wanted to open it up to you for any questions that you may have had. Didn't want to necessarily go through more detail than maybe what you wanted to hear this morning based on what we have already talked about and the things that you've already read within. But we're open and want to hear what questions you have related to some of the details of the numbers, if you do have any.
Why don't we start with Ms. Morgan? Ms. Morgan, do you have any questions?
I have no questions, thank you.
Anyone else?
I have questions.
Ms. Giovinelli?
One of the things I was hoping that y'all would explain a little bit, because a lot of people have this misconception about the lottery allocation. So if y'all could just explain that, because it's not a lot, and people think it is, because the lottery seems to be, but not on this end.
So we do not receive a lot of money from the lottery, and all of the funds that we do receive from the lottery are not what we would call flexible dollars that we have the ability to spend to give raises or to do anything else with. The lottery dollars come to us in two ways. The first one is through school recognition. So any school that receives an A or improves a letter grade and maintains that, they are recognized through the school recognition, and they are given an allotment of dollars that they can then work with their staff and their SAC to approve how that wants to be spent. Now, the largest portion of those are spent as bonuses to the staff, and then some dollars are set aside for some other things for the students. They'll buy materials and instructional materials for the students and things with those as well. If there are any funds remaining, which there usually are not much, if there are any remaining, it goes into the school improvement fund for the school's SACs to approve on the expenditures of those. And so that, those funds are then used to help the schools meet the school improvement plan that the school has established with their SAC. But very few dollars are generated through that, if any. We had very little dollars this year generated through that. And I think we received less than an amount for running the district for one day with lottery dollars.
So in terms of the documentation that you have today, that, on the general fund page, this number that I have highlighted, which is the state FEFP revenue number, that number, the $331 million, includes the money that we get from the lottery? The best breakout that we have of the money that we get from the lottery is on the FEFP calculation page that we went through at one of the previous briefings. So what we'll do is, in the tentative budget book that you'll receive, we'll have that FEFP calculation page in there, and we'll put some specific verbiage in there related to the lottery dollars, how they relate to the FEFP allocation, and, you know, what it is that they mean in terms of the budget, which is a much smaller amount than is usually perceived, as you said, Ms. Giovinelli. So we can make sure to point that out within that tentative budget book document that you'll receive.
That'd be great, because it just gives us the, you know, it really is an eye-opener.
Right, 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 right. Okay, good.
So, okay, one of the other questions I have is, okay, so there's a reserve for the FTA shortfall slash proration. That's three, is that $3 million?
Yes, ma'am.
And what is, what is that for?
So as I spoke, I told you all before, we do a projection of the FTE, and we always assume we're going to be correct, but we may not always be correct. And so we put in the back of the budget an FTE shortfall in case the numbers that I projected are greater than what we actually see. We won't have to go back out to schools and take money from them mid-year. So this is just a reserve that kind of holds. So each calculation that we receive when there's a difference from what the second calculation to each of those times that the FTE is recalculated, when there's a difference in dollars, it's pulled from there so that we don't have to do it anywhere else. And also, prorations are very prevalent in our system. What the state does is when they, when they do their allocations, it's capped based on the number of students they project for the state. So if the state projection is low, the dollars then aren't there to fund the students that actually show up. And so they go back and do a proration to every district based on the proportionate share of students, and that helps cover that proration, which is usually a couple of million dollars to us every year.
So basically, what you're telling me is that you're being proactive rather than reactive-
Correct.
-to having this money there in reserves, or you're taking it out of reserves, and it's kind of in the budget, holding for the differences?
Yes, ma'am. We, yeah, we budget for it ahead of time so that I don't have to figure out where to take it from later.
Got it. Okay, so then the other thing I had was on page four, the transfer, the FEMA $3.1 million loss. Is that, can you explain that to me? And is it really 100% loss? Or are we still anticipating to receive?
We're still anticipating to receive money from FEMA. It's just been very slow in coming. So, you know, we have to account for those dollars ahead of time, and as they come in, that will make that, we'll make the adjustments as they come in, as we receive the dollars.
Okay. Let me see. On page 11, the $3.4 million to increase for new positions. All these, and this is probably for Dr. Atkins more. I mean, for all these positions needed, I mean, are we going to be hiring that many new people? I mean, I'm just a little alarmed over it because we had schools reduce their budgets, and yet we're going to increase here. So I'm just a little worried for our schools.
Sure, I understand. I think one of the things we're going to have to look at, you know, the increase in our capital budget because we're building new schools. So one of the areas that we've had to see some addition is in the area of capital. If you think about just having enough project managers, for example, to make sure we have our capital projects handled, that's the place where you'll see the increase. The other thing that we did see, like, an increase in, like, we added one executive director and then transferred another over to academic services. And I think that will allow us to provide more support for schools. And then you see increases in other areas in academic services, again, that I think you'll find that it's increasing the support that we have for schools across the board, particularly in the area of student services, you know, mental health, psychologists, and things like that.
Yes, I do agree. We do, I saw those, so I agree with that. Let me see, I think that was just about it. So we really won't know about the millage until the TRIM notice is what I think. Is that my understanding?
Well, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Actually, the state has to certify with us by this Friday. So this Friday is the first time that I'll see the new numbers for the tax rule and the millages to know what they're recommending for us.
So what will happen is, once we receive that information on July 19th, then the budget staff will go back and recalculate the new tentative budget amounts with the new millages. We will get together that tentative budget book along with a sample of, or along with a draft of what all of the resolutions that we would be asking you to approve the night of the tentative budget would look like. And you will receive that information with, you know, all of the document for, with the documents for the special budget hearing in advance of the hearing taking place. So it'll be before the TRIM notices go out. By the time the advertisement hits the paper, you will also have the documentation for everything that would be, that we would be asking you to approve that tentative budget night, so by the night of the 26th.
Great. And then, one more thing. On page 10, the insurance increase, that's $3.3 million increase. Is the district absorbing that? Or are they putting that out, back out to the employees to have to pay that? So I wasn't sure, because I just, it was a very substantial increase, and I'm concerned for our employees having to pay additional insurance premiums.
Point out, I'm sorry, point out the number that you are looking at. I'm on the internal service funds, and I'm here in this number for medical insurance premiums? Is that what you're referring to?
Yeah, on page 10.
Okay.
So that was, that was a negotiated increase for the district to pick up additional costs for insurance.
Thank you.
And the board, the board share, the board contribution for those premiums did increase for this year, to, you know, to cover those increased premiums.
Thank you. I'm done.
Nothing, she answered.
Thank you, so, thank you, thank you so much for those questions. We wanted to make sure that the information that we were presenting was relevant for you. So the questions that you're asking are very helpful for us to target in on the things that you want to hear.
Well, and for me, I actually, maybe I knew I didn't have, so I'm trying to ask the questions so you can-
Well, I thought it was great because we went to that finance-
Right.
...meeting, which told us all about, you know, making sure the overage versus we don't want to go under, because then it's going to be a cost to us, and we want to make sure we're accurate on our count of students. So, yeah, thank you for, that was a great explanation.
Thank you.
Ms. Vaughn, do you have any questions?
Actually, just kind of a comment to piggyback off what Ms. Giovinelli said. That figure on page, I guess it's 11, with the proposed new positions, that was quite a shocking number, about $3.36 million in new. I'm just, and I guess this is really more toward Dr. Atkins. When these numbers kind of settle down, and I know you've promised the organizational chart sometime. Tell me, remind me when it's going to be due, when you're, or when you're proposing to have that to us?
I think that we would, should be able to have at least the draft copies prior to going into the July 30th meeting.
Yeah, so that, we had planned on the organizational chart being part of the documents that are submitted with the tentative budget book.
Okay, because I'll be honest, this, there were a lot of new, 42 new positions, and that's, you know, a big chunk of money. And as I've said in the past, I like the visual. I like looking at the chart and seeing, well, some of these things are new, but there may have been some things that were eliminated, and just kind of looking at the big picture, it's so much easier when we're approving this kind of money to have it right there in front of us.
Gotcha.
That would be, that would be my comment on it. And the legal counsel, another one for Dr. Atkins, legal counsel coordinator, is that the diversity coordinator?
Yes.
Okay, that's what I was thinking. Just wanted to be clear.
And I did, I do have on my, since Mr. Savage is here, it's one of the things he might be working on. I was hoping to see Mr. Davis, but wanted to share our conversation that we had had relative to, oh, there he is, well, hey.
It's like a little puppet.
Over my right shoulder. So I, we had a conversation with a board member, Vaughn, about an interactive organizational chart in the future where we could literally do dropdowns, and you could get information in terms of, like, contact information, job description, and things like that. So, you know, as we're moving forward into the future, and not just a pure org chart, but actually an interactive org chart that's available online, and being able to provide the public with a lot of information.
Yeah, and I appreciate that. I think that'll be so helpful. It'll be helpful to me, and it'll definitely be helpful to the public as well, because I think sometimes the public, you know, what division is that? Who are the people that I need to come? And I think that'll be helpful for all of us. I appreciate that.
Yeah. If I can point out a couple of things related to your question on the list of new positions, the 13 of them on here are school-based. So some, you know, a good number of the new positions are really related to school-based positions that are going to be out at schools every day, contributing to, you know, the day-to-day work at all of our schools. But then also, many of these things, you mentioned the org chart. The superintendent's org chart is his high-level org chart of our administrators across the district. But then we have, in an effort of transparency, positions here that are not on that org chart. They come at the support level, right? That are here doing the day-to-day work in some of the individual departments as well. So whereas typically, you may not see necessarily every new position that is being approved in a budget like this, you might only see stuff that's at the superintendent's org level. These positions go way into more detail than just that. So I wanted to make sure that that was pointed out, because it really is kind of two different things in terms of what the superintendent is adding at his organizational level, and then some of the other support things that are needed at the school, at the district level.
Another thing I'd like to point out is, like, if you look at the countywide exceptional student child program,[1642.78] student child program, the coordinator that's there, that coordinator is actually going in to replace three current teaching positions, we're putting teachers back in the classroom and hiring a coordinator, saving us about $150,000 doing it this way, to fulfill a need, so that we make sure that we're using our dollars the best way we can.
I'm sorry, which, I didn't hear what position?
Coordinator for ESC.
Oh, okay.
So that one is actually, we have three teachers that are here doing that job right now, they're going, we're putting them back in the classroom, and then we're hiring the coordinator to take those duties on. And it's about a savings of $150,000 to do that type of stuff. So then we're looking at that type of thing, seeing where we can get our best bang for our buck, too.
Good, thank you. That's all I have.
Ms. Givernelli?
I just want to add to the dropdown org chart, that would be very helpful. I would agree with Mrs. Vaughn, because, I mean, you never know who's, who's on first and what's on second, so, and how it all rolls out, so it would be very helpful, so I want to add to that, so, please, and thank you.
Ms. Morgan, did I hear you try to jump in?
Yes.
Okay. Digital classrooms, what was that money used for?
Digital classrooms was money that we had used to meet the requirement for all the classrooms, all the computers in the classrooms, and we've been using it to purchase software and things like that for the classroom. So we, that software's not going away for the classes, so we're still going to be having to make those purchases.
So is the requirement still there?
The requirement is still there as well.
But they haven't earmarked the funds, they've just put it into the general fund?
Correct.
And the same is true for best and brightest?
Best and brightest, yes.
We're going to have to pay that out, but they've included it in the BSA, right?
It's not in the BSA, it's a, it's what they used to call categorical, but now it's a line item in the FEFP specifically for that.
Okay, so do we have a feel, last year, we know that they gave us 47 cents per student, do we have a feel this year for how much additional discretionary revenue we have per student? If you don't have that number today, that, I don't want to put you on the spot, $75, but if you take out some of the required spending from that, I'm wondering if it is in fact $75.
Right, so the total was $75, when you take out some of the required spending, it is not that, it becomes about half of that, because the, as the dollar amount breakout between, on the FEFP, between what we got for, we say price level, and growth versus the other required expenditures, breaks out to be about 3% of what we received of the total 6.7% increase in the FEFP, really are flexible or discretionary dollars. So.
All right, good, thank you. I think that's it for me for questions. Anybody else? I think we're in good shape, ladies, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, all right, good, thank you. Then we look forward to seeing you on the 30th for that tentative budget approval, and you, of course, will be receiving those documents ahead of time in the form of a tentative budget book, and all of the resolutions relating that we will be asking for approval for on the 30th.
Awesome, thank you. Okay, moving on to the next item on the agenda is public comment. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to make public comment? Seeing none, we have board member comments coming up next. Given the fact that we only have 10 minutes left before our hard start time of 10 o'clock for our action meeting, I would ask the board that you hold your comments till the action meeting, is that fair? Is that fair? Ms. Morgan?
That's fine.
Attorney Gabriel, do you have any comments?
No, ma'am, I'm good, thank you.
Dr. Atkins?
No comments at this time, thank you.
Anybody have any org items for good of the order?
Not I.
Okay, so no other business, we are adjourned, and we'll be back to begin right at 10 o'clock on the dot.